Good evening and welcome to the March 27, 2023 City Council Meeting. And I'll call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask Councilmember Lando to lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
Ready, begin?
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you please take role?
Yes. Councilmember Calmit.
Here.
Councilmember Landau.
Here.
Councilmember Steele.
Here.
Mayor Protemse Starcid.
Here.
And Mayor Moore.
Here.
All present.
I'll move to approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions, ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Item E for further discussion.
And City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. Six supplemental communications in the form of supplemental questions as well as PowerPoints were received after posting of the agenda. They've been distributed to the council and made available to the public.
Thank you. And I'll call for a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda except for Item E.
I'll move.
Vote on the iPad.
Yes.
Are you a yes vote?
Yes.
No, you didn't get the pop out.
Motion carries five votes yes.
Okay. We'll move on to presentations. Bike registration presented by the community-oriented policing team. I'd like to call upon Lieutenant Klaspe.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. We are the Community-Oriented Policing Team, Officer Kendra Owen and Officer David Railbrook.
Hello.
We're here to present a project that we've been working on regarding bicycle registration. The program that we're using is called 529 Garage. 529 Garage is a web and application-based bicycle registry system that is worldwide, instead of each agency having their own system to register bikes. 529 Garage allows all agencies that use the system to share information. The strategy of 529 Garage is to bring together bicycle owners, shops, police, schools, and cities with a common set of tools to allow communities to become more organized. Bicycle owners can sign up at Project 529 Garage and register any type of bicycle they own. The users create their own profile and use as much or as little personal information as they wish to provide. The users can upload pictures of their bicycles as well as any specific identifying information. Law enforcement agencies can also register found bicycles, check if they have been reported stolen by their owners, or connect registered bicycle owners with their lost bicycle. The Seal Beach Police Department in 2022 had approximately 52 thefts of bicycles. Fifty-four bicycles were booked into our property. They were either booked for found or safekeeping. Twelve of them were returned to their owner based on serial numbers or for us to able to identify the owners. And 42 bikes were sent to auction, unable to find the owners. The benefits are that this web-based system allows users and law enforcement entities to search the serial number to identify if a found bicycle has been reported stolen. It's 24 hours a day. Any user can check the serial number to see if the bicycle that they are buying has been reported stolen by its owner. If a match is made through the application, contact information from the owner is provided. This match will also provide information on where the theft occurred and other information like suspect description or circumstances regarding the theft. If there is no match made, our property department can make a found bicycle post. The 529 Garage can publish a found bike poster that is searchable on their site. The site filters out inquiries by requiring owners to show proof of either a police report, a serial number, or some other form of proof of ownership. The best part about this application is that it's completely free.
So this picture is an example of what somebody's bike profile looks like on their website. Users can generate as much information as they want or populate as much information as they want, such as like photos specifically identifying their bicycle. And then if your bike gets stolen, you can then log into the website and say, hey, my bike was stolen. And this is what will come up if somebody were to search for that specific serial number. So specifically, we've had success with this tool in the past. We contacted a subject that had multiple bicycles in his possession. And doing a search on our current system, we were unable to determine an owner or to determine if the bike was actually stolen or not. I then did a search on 529 Garage, which is this nationwide system. And I learned that the bicycle was actually reported stolen. I found the owner and then was able to make that connection through the website because they gave enough information. They gave me their email address or phone number. And then I was able to contact that person and get them back in touch with their bike. So successful in that return, or that regard. Next slide, please. Some other benefits for 529 Garage. It's a tool that we can use to keep statistical data for bicycles registered, stolen, lost, or found. A lot of local agencies such as Huntington Beach, Long Beach, Irvine, Newport Beach, and LAPD are using the system and other agencies throughout the U.S. and Canada and other countries as well. When we host bicycle safety events, we can also simultaneously promote bicycle registration and proper reporting of bicycle thefts. And we have already spoken to parents in Magaw and the PTA meetings as well as getting our local bicycle shops onboard with registering every bike that is sold. And our current city website and PD website, when you look for where to register your bicycle on those sites, it's currently linked out to 529 Garage. So. And this is kind of our backend, what it looks like, just to give you an example of when we collect information. If we're constantly getting thefts in certain locations, they'll geotag those locations to give us hotspots. It'll, this is kind of like our inventory garage. If we take bikes in, it gives us all that statistical data. So this is what it would look like for us. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one. Is this for any kind of, like, the electric bikes too? Or?
Yeah, any kind of bicycle. So most people don't do a good job about registering their bikes. Probably majority of people in the city don't have their bikes registered. So this is a simple, easy way for people to either get online or get the app on their phone. And you just create a quick profile, put in all the serial numbers for any bicycle you have. And serial numbers are usually found on the underside of the crankshaft. Or when you buy your bicycle, it's probably on your receipt, too. So it's important that we register bicycles so that if they are reported stolen, you have a way to report it, not only on the website but to us as well.
Thank you.
That was kind of my same question. So e-bikes don't have a different type of registration?
No. Yeah, any bicycle can be registered on here. And you can search, like, if you're buying a bike on a secondhand website, like, let's say if somebody posts something on Craigslist or whatever website you use in the buy stuff, you can search the serial number for the bike on 529 Garage yourself. And you don't even have to be a registered user, but you just search it, and it'll tell you if that bike was reported stolen or not. And then you could notify law enforcement and say, hey, so-and-so is trying to sell the stolen bike.
Awesome.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Do we have, because of where we are, any more a problem than other cities with regards to the bikes that get stolen, get broken down right away?
I don't know if we have any more of a problem than any other city. I think every city is plagued by theft of bicycles.
I just meant, you know, because I understand that that is amongst some of the encamped homeless areas where that's one of the things that happens.
Some are broken down, but often they're just put online to sell so people can make the connection.
It's easier.
If you get a nice enough bike, they're just trying to turn it around and sell it for cash, unlike OfferUp or Craigslist or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. I have one question. How do you get the word out there for people to register? I mean, I guess that's our job.
Hopefully through this. We've asked the PTA to put it in their newsletter, the school, Magaw, to put it in their newsletter. We're going to do bicycle events in the future, again, for bicycle safety reasons but also to promote this. And then our only bike shop in the city, getting them onboard as well, putting up signage.
Okay.
And then promoting it through our social media and things like that.
Are there other cities around where we are now that use it?
Yes. Like Huntington Beach, Long Beach uses it, Newport Beach, most of the big cities use it.
Okay. It looks like a great tool.
Yeah.
Everyone should get their bike registered.
It's pretty simple, it'll probably take you, you know, a minute or two per bike.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to National Telecommunications Week, which is April 9 through 15. And the city of Seal Beach declares April 9 through 15 as National Telecommunications Week. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of the life and preservation of property. The safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the West City's Police Communications Center. Public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. The dispatchers of the West City's Police Communications have contributed substantially to the appreciation of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each of our dispatchers has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job this past year. Please join me in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And I'll call upon West City Police Communications Director Cassandra Edwards.
Hi. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Ingram, and the Seal Beach Police Department, and all city staff for having us here today. It's my great honor to speak with you this evening about National Telecommunications Week, which is observed annually during the second week of April. The city recognizes our dedicated dispatchers who work tirelessly behind the scenes to keep our communities safe. WestCom is a joint powers authority, serving the cities of Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and Cypress, and also providing dispatch services to the Orange County Park Rangers. WestCom serves over 90,000 residents and covers a service area of 23 square miles. WestCom processes over 126,000 phone calls a year, 28,000 of those being 911 calls alone. And they handle over 74,000 police incidents per year. They are also the lifeline for police officers, providing vital information and support to ensure that they can respond safely, quickly, and effectively to emergencies. Dispatchers are the first level of contact that the public has in the event of an emergency and require a unique skill set to perform the job. They work long hours and deal with challenging and stressful situations on a daily basis. And being a member of the Communication Center is extremely rewarding, as each team exhibits pride, dedication, integrity, and top-notch customer service to the residents and the visitors. Thank you for this recognition and the honor of serving your city.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do we have any oral communications?
Hello, thank you for your time. Been a resident here for 24 years, and I'm kind of just looking for direction. I live in College Park West. I don't know if this is a matter that can be heard today or what the process is. But basically, I guess about, what, 15 years ago, you enacted no motorhomes, no boats in front of the houses. And the situation for me, and I'll pass this up to the clerk, I only made five copies, so maybe you can share, but I think a picture speaks a thousand words. This is something that's been going on for over a decade. And it's basically, when does a commercial business become a home-based business? What's the definition? I think the easiest thing, though, is the sign, the sign that leads into College Park West says no vehicles over 21 feet. This thing's 24. And it just sits there in the driveway, right next door to me. And quite frankly, it's an eyesore, no more than my motorhome would be. If I left it or my boat in my driveway, I guess that's why we all cleaned up Seal Beach, to keep it from looking like other cities. The other concern I have is I've been a firefighter for 32 years, and now that I'm retired, I still am aware of the housing material conditions that exist. And the reasons for disclosure and the reasons for containment, not in residential properties. And these boxes here, I have pictures of them stacked up to the roof of the residence. This is right next to my bedroom. All kinds of flammable materials. And again, that's another concern. So, I mean, it's, when does this become a home-based business versus a commercial venture? And if that's the case, then why would we even get a storefront building or a retail store when you can just run this out of your house? So anyway, that's all really all I have to say, other than I've made phone calls, I've left emails, and I guess this is maybe the new work-from-home philosophy. It just doesn't seem to go anywhere. 10 years later, I'm sitting here, taking up your time, hoping that we can all work together to do what I thought we had enacted was to get rid of the motorhomes, the vehicles that were oversized, and the boats. So you let me know what needs to be done, who I need, who will actually take my phone calls, and who I need to call between 2:00 and 5:00 in the morning evidently when vehicles need to be permitted to park oversized on the street or in the driveway. But right now, I've stopped police officers to drive through, they go, oh, well, we don't handle that, call this guy, call this guy, left a message, people don't pick up. So anyway, it's, I just ask you, if this was in front of your house, in your house, how long would this go on? You know, that's, that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, sure.
Sir, if you could do us a favor, please, and just leave your contact information with the city clerk, and someone will reach out to you tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I'll move to the city attorney report. City Attorney Gurelli, do you have anything to report?
The City Council did not meet in closed session this evening, but I did want to report that a special closed session meeting was held on March 17. All five City Council members were there, and no reportable action was taken that day. That's all for me.
Move to City Manager Ingram. Do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just have one item tonight, just a reminder for the council and for the public that we do have a special City Council meeting next Tuesday, April 4, for our strategic planning meeting, which begins at 9:00 a.m. at Fire Station 48. And the agenda for that meeting should come out within the next couple of days with additional information. And we, of course, welcome the public to attend and participate in that meeting alongside the City Council and our staff team. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move to council comments. Councilmember Calmit.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I attended the, our monthly OCFA meeting, Orange County Fire Authority. And during that meeting, we learned that the contract with the Firefighters Union was ratified by their membership. And so we've gotten that, you know, settled and out of the way. And we're very close on the other labor groups that are within OCFA, the OCEA and the Chief Officers and so forth. And this week, I attended the OCAG community meeting. OCAG is the Orange County Council of Governments. It's a sub-planning organization that works, in a sense, under SCAG, which is Southern California Association of Governments. And it was very interesting because this is our annual conference that was held at the Nixon Library in Yorba Linda, so it was a very nice setting, and it was interesting to, to be there for that. You know, we talked a lot about municipal planning and some of the issues that we are facing, and they had some excellent speakers we were able to listen to. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Steele.
Yes, I attended the, let me look at the name of here again. It's the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Board Meeting, in keeping with the leisure world dominance in the mosquito business in city council chambers, carrying on Sandra Masalabat's legacy. I am on the board there, and I am happy to report that mosquito season has not yet begun. And so a couple months from now, but there are things that we can do as a city to make people aware of what not to do, the puddles of waters and things like that. But I'm a stone-cold rookie at mosquitoes, so we'll...
If I might interrupt?
Yes, yes.
There's a mosquito in the sink in the bathroom outside that I saw just before the meeting, so...
Ah, here we go. Anyway, so I did that. I also went to the sanitation board meeting with, as the alternate, with Shelley, and that was very interesting. One thing I did learn about Orange County sanitation is they don't like surprises. They like things planned out, like 10 years in advance and no surprises in between. So it's kind of like, and I'm with them. I'd like to keep it that way. I was also at the starting line for the run on Saturday morning, which was really awesome to see 3,500 people lined up to take on 5K or 10K and, and actually see the community. You all know I live in leisure world, and you put 3,500 of us together and you've got, like, 3,000 walkers and wheelchairs and things like that. But this was awesome to see that many people out and participating in the community. So I look forward to working with the Orange County, the West Orange County Water Board as well. So I'm just starting with them.
Mayor Protemse Starcid.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the special City Council meeting, and I also attended the OC Sanitation Board meeting. And he's right, they don't like surprises. They like that just everything to go really smoothly. So anyway, that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Lando.
On Monday, the 20th, I was at the Leo meeting at the Methodist Church. I am one of the Leo advisors, and it's located at 10th and Central. It was a great turnout. We had 25 kids in attendance. The Leos are still rebuilding. At one point, we had over 200 Leos as part of their group. So we are currently at 63, and we just had 15 join in February and March. We had 10 Leos that just worked the Run Seal Beach, nine cleaned up the Red Car. Upcoming projects include helping the youth center, the Easter egg hunt, the Earth Day beach cleanup, which Cody and I are in charge of, and the Cub Scout barbecue, et cetera. So we're always looking for new kids to join. We encourage to get our youth involved. It's a great program. Also, our current Leo president is Mayor Moore's son, Evan. And I also attended the open house for Assemblyman Tria. It was very well-attended. Chief Anderson was also there. We look forward to Assemblyman Tria serving our district. And that's all I have. Oh, wait, one more thing. I also want to make sure our residents are aware of the joint study session with the City Council and the Planning Commission together at the April 24 City Council meeting. At this meeting, we'll be discussing the zoning updates. I encourage your participation in this, as it will have impacts, and knowing the facts will help us all navigate through this process. Thank you.
Thanks. It was exciting to see so many people at the Run Seal Beach this year. There, like was said, there are 3,500 people there, and it was very well-organized. Thank you to the volunteers, organizers, and the sponsors for making it such a special event. I went on a police ride-along on St. Patrick's Day, and thank, thank you to all the police that keep us safe on St. Patrick's Day. I got to meet quite a few police officers that, that night between going down Main Street and kind of a mini car chase. Someone was not obeying the traffic laws. And so that was nice to see so many, meet so many of the police officers that night. Dump Day was also a success last week. Thank you to Megan, and Lauren, and the rest of staff for marketing the event, making it such a success. And I'm excited to see the progress recently with the potential new phone system. I hope to see that on the agenda real soon. We really need a new phone system where people's messages don't get lost. And I look forward to seeing residents at the upcoming April 4 strategic planning session at Fire Station 48. Thank you.
I'll move to council items. Item A will direct City Council appointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission, District 5. It's the request of Councilmember Steele that the City Council appoint Ivan Panchev to the Recreation and Parks Commission as a representative for District 5.
Yes, I, when we inducted all of the other nominees to the other commissions, I didn't have anybody for Wreckin' Park at that moment in time. Ivan came to my attention because he's a champion, you can stand out for a minute, Ivan. He's a champion pickleball player, which pickleball, of course, is taking over leisure world and the rest of Seal Beach. But nonetheless, he's retired from UPS, and he's a great guy. We had a nice meeting, and I look forward to his assistance in that particular commission. So Ivan, thank you for stepping up, and thank you for volunteering, and appreciate it very much.
I'll call for a motion.
I move.
I'll second.
No, go ahead, you got it.
Please vote on your iPads.
She's not getting her.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
This motion carries five votes yes.
Okay, we'll move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. Call for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the item pulled.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item E.
I'll second.
Do we have a vote?
I vote yes.
This motion carries five votes yes.
And we'll move to the item that was pulled. Item E, we have a staff report.
Item E, we have a staff report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll go ahead and turn this item over to our Community Development Director, Alexa Smithel, just to provide a brief overview and address questions from council member Landau, as well as any questions any other council members might have. Alexa?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is a contract extension for Michael Baker International, who has been assisting city staff in creating a local coastal plan. The local coastal plan is a document that, once approved by the Coastal Commission, will allow the city to administer the Coastal Act in most circumstances here in the city with within the coastal zone. So south of Westminster Boulevard is our coastal zone. We can liken it to kind of a mini land use element and zoning code that are specific to the coastal zone. The local coastal plan has two primary components, a land use plan and an implementation plan. We are about to send the land use plan, the first component, to the Coastal Commission staff for their second review of the document. They received the document more than a year and a half ago and provided feedback, so we have updated it in response and we'll be sending it to them for a second review. We are simultaneously putting together the framework for the second component, which is the implementation plan. So that's where we are in the process. Michael Baker International has agreed to a no-cost contract extension to continue this work due to competing priorities and staffing levels. We can't do everything we want to do all at once, so it's taking longer than we originally anticipated. This contract amendment is only to extend the timeline, no additional expenses being added to it at this time. I also want to note that we did receive a small grant from the Coastal Commission in support of this effort for $50,000. Their grant, their grant staff has actually been really wonderful to work with. The Coastal Commission recently received additional funding from the state, about $31 million in grants that they're offering now. This program was was not so well-funded when we started this project. So we have been working with their staff to amend our existing grant in order to close out this first step of the project, the the land use plan, and then go after additional grant funding to do the second part, the the implementation plan. So we will begin that process as well, and we're very hopeful that we'll be able to obtain additional grant funding to support this effort. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you for the overview, Alexa. I also love hearing the words no cost increase. That's good. So with the with this land use plan that was submitted over a year ago, at that time, was there EQCB or planning or public input on that or?
My understanding is that this predates me, so I won't be able to give you exact answers, I suspect. But when we send it to the Coastal Commission this time around, it will be available for public review. So I believe that that was the case last time, that it was put on our website to receive comments, and we'll and we'll continue that process this next round.
And then also the EQCB and planning, do they have input on that as well?
Not not at this time. We need to get further down the process to get to the implementation element, and then as a whole package, we'll start moving it forward.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the the fee schedule that I've seen, are we pretty much on track with that still, even though we're facing inflation right now?
Our Michael Baker believes that they can complete the work at at the price that was quoted. So yes, I mean, it was probably generous of them. I'm sure that their billable rates have gone up to to counter inflation and and other things, but they have agreed to a no-cost extension.
Okay, and I got one more question. So what is the benefit for asleep people? What is the benefit for this local coastal plan? And then also, you know, is there a downside to it?
That's a big question. The the short answer is that the benefit is for development projects within the city. As long as they fall within the realm of our coastal plan, we are able to determine whether or not they can move forward as a part under the Coastal Act. So not only our own municipal ordinances and things like that, but do they fit within the Coastal Act? So for example, someone that's, you know, going to demo their home and and build a new home, right now, they have, they start with our planning division, we'll approve them in concept, and then they need to go apply for that same same project with the Coastal Commission and go through Coastal Commission's process before they can come back to us and start building permits and and those types of things. So in most cases, if we have a local coastal plan, it will eliminate that step with the outside agency because we will be administering the Coastal Act here in-house. So that's absolutely a benefit to our applicants because the Coastal Commission can can take a long time. They can be challenging to work with and and get through the process. They only hold one meeting a month, all kinds of things that slow projects down that would be able to ameliorate with this. At the same time, it's it's absolutely more more work for staff, and some of these things can be complicated. Some of, you know, some of requirements by the Coastal Act, you know, we will, we will, within the parameters of our adopted plan, have to say no to certain things or have to add conditions to certain types of development projects that may not be conditions that, you know, we as a community love or wanted to have, but they're necessary in order to implement the Coastal Act. So there's there's pros and cons.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Are you a yes, Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay, thank you. No public hearing. We have unfinished business. Item G, Contract for Professional Services with StanTech Consulting Services. Call upon Community Development Director Smithel.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for an environmental impact report to be conducted as a part of the zoning code update. So I wanted to make a few comments to to clarify what we were doing based on kind of what what I was hearing at the last meeting and created this graphic, which hopefully is helpful. I was trying trying to do a better job of explaining kind of the difference between the housing element and the zoning code update and and this effort here. The housing element, as you know, is a huge undertaking and a substantive document. It reports on current population conditions. It analyzes constraints to development. It identifies where new development can be accommodated commensurate with our assigned unit count, our RENA count of 1,243 units. It also contains a work plan showing what the city will do in order to reduce barriers to development. And I've included in in italics there some of the other work plan items. So let me just be clear. The purpose of the housing element, state mandates, state certification, they all hinge on what we are doing, how we are showing that we can foster growth within the community. This is not just about picking sites, it's about the work plan. So all of those things you see kind of on the right there in green, that's that's part of the work plan. And the number one item is the zoning code update to rezone the sites that we say will accommodate housing so that under our zoning code, they are allowed to accommodate housing. Because rezoning will allow for new types of development that did not that were not previously contemplated, the rezoning is a project that must be analyzed under the California Environmental Quality Control Act, or SEQA. The contract before you tonight is for an environmental impact report, which will analyze potential impacts that could result from the zoning changes. As we do not have development proposals, we cannot analyze specific development projects, so we have to take a broader view. The first task of the EIR is to define a scope for what will be analyzed, and StanTech city staff and the city attorney's office will all be a part of creating that project description. That project description will be well buffered to build in flexibility as we, again, don't know exactly what the future holds right now. And during the scoping period, the public will also be able to provide input on what should be studied. And that's that's really what the early phases of the EIR process are about, to making sure that we're studying the right things and in the right amounts. As a part of the EIR, cumulative impacts will be analyzed. These would include proposed projects at the Old Ranch Country Club, the Lamson Project, projects being proposed in in Long Beach just across the San Gabriel River, and any other projects that are identified during the research phase at the beginning of the project. And I also wanted to provide more information on how future projects will be addressed from the SEQA perspective. In the EIR, we are talking about it will streamline SEQA analysis of future projects. That's that's how SEQA works for for any project. If you would, you would look around to see what other analyses has been performed and try to tear off of that analyses in order to incorporate mitigation measures and and again streamline the process. And this is absolutely what the state is trying to get to. They want us to make housing simple, simple to implement. So it's choosing the sites, but it's also the work plan. What can we do that's going to reduce barriers to development? That is what the housing alone is about. That is what the state directive is. As the lead agency, which would be the city, we're going to be the lead agency in any kind of development proposal that that comes forward within the city that speaks to the housing element. We have the ability and the flexibility and the authority to require additional studies be done. And we would do that at at our discretion to make sure that analysis is conducted in an appropriate manner on a per-project basis. At this time, we just don't know what those projects are, so we're creating this broader document that we will build buffers into for flexibility. And I I did include the dates on there. The the housing element was due in October of 2021, and the zoning element was, I'm sorry, the zoning update was due in October of 2022. So we are absolutely behind schedule. We're not the only ones. This is, it's just a very complicated process, and we really do need to keep marching forward. Is it ideal for us to be working on the zoning before we finish the housing element? No, it's not. But at the same time, we need to show our best faith effort, that staff's very, very strong recommendation, that we put our best foot forward and try to continue with this process to comply with state law, or we could suffer some very, very dire dire consequences. We set aside money specifically for this purpose. Every time we issue a building permit, money goes into this fund for us to support general plan changes. And it's 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 for this, it's for these times that we need the funding to address these concerns, and in this case, state mandates. And with that, staff recommends approval of this contract for this EIR to get started. It will take us about a year to get through the process, and I'm available for questions.
Council member Steele.
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank you, Alexis Smithel, for all the help in getting me around my original confusion, my original complaint about the order of things here, doing a environmental impact study before we are actually certified for the housing element. And thank you for helping me understand that the process matters, where we're in in the process matters, to whether or not we get certified, and in addition to that, that there are other values that the city of Seal Beach will garner from having this EIR. I'm getting good with the initials here. The EIR, in a in a general way, can benefit the city, and so I'm I'm comfortable supporting this now at this time, so.
Any other comments?
I had a few questions. And thank you for the the presentation. I think that it helps, it helps explain because it is very confusing with all the steps and all the all the processes. Part of my concern last time was that the program EIR is very general, but something you said about requiring, I I was a little bit, I don't know if it's the staff report of which which one, it was saying that a project might just only require a traffic analysis in addition to this. And so then I'm like, well, that means then that if you refer everything back to the program EIR, that the general discussion, well, we've got water, or, you know, there's really no environment, there's really no birds nesting, or, you know, the general things that weren't really studied in depth, that those would apply then if you don't do a more detailed study. So I was a little bit concerned that that might be a little too light, but I suppose it has to do with the recognition of what impacts that that there might be there. So, you know, I hope that I I hope that is okay, that I I hope you understand that where my concerns were, that that I would want whatever it is to be a complete analysis. And I recognize that it's trying to move the process forward and make it easier, but I would want to make sure that everything is is correctly studied in each project. So I had another question that had to do with the Old Ranch project because that, even though you said there's no projects, that one is under review right now environmentally, and it's being presented as a specific plan that they're presenting. So I I wasn't sure if that would be handled by this, this program EIR, since it's coming in as a specific plan or not. And you gave me an answer, but I could not tell from that answer whether that was a yes or no, so.
The answer, the answer is no. In terms of the Old Ranch specific plan proposal, when that's presented to council, it will be accompanied by its own EIR. So we won't be analyzing that project in this program EIR. However, it, like any other project that's in some stage of development, even if it's just a proposal, will be included in the cumulative impacts analysis. So it's not, it's not ignored in this analysis where we would assume that, you know, essentially that the proposed project is is moving forward, and we would take all of that information and include it in this EIR to make sure that cumulative impacts reflect that project that's happening. However, it is not this EIR that will be presented with that project for council consideration.
Alexa, if I could just add a finer point to that. When the Old Ranch Country Club specific plan comes to the city council, the EIR accompanying that will be at a project level of detail. That's what we call it. So the analysis for biological impacts, for example, would look at the site-specific biological impacts. And in that case, look at the specific impacts to any nesting birds, habitats on that site, and not just more of a general look at what the zoning code is going to look like for the entire city.
Okay, so what happens to Old Ranch in this in this EIR?
So this EIR is going to acknowledge that that project is pending before the city. If it is approved, it's going to incorporate some of those impacts into the overall impact that the program EIR is trying to analyze.
So is the program EIR going to change the zoning of all of these 11 sites?
It's going to analyze the impacts of changing the zoning on all of those 11 sites. But from a general, a more general level, because there are no specific projects, we don't know what project is going to come. We're analyzing the density, the maximum density and maximum build-out, assuming that somebody wanted to build out the project at that maximum density.
For all the for all the.
For all those sites.
Okay. Okay.
And so looking at the the scope of work that the consultant has put forward, in some cases, there will be some very specific and very detailed analyses, like for traffic, for example, the level of service analysis that looks like they're going to, you know, roll out the traffic study to figure out how many cars are going through intersections so that there's some data to support their conclusions.
Okay. That was another one, another question I had regarding level of service and and average daily traffic. A street like Lamson, if you go in the middle of the day, you're not going to see very much traffic. But if you go in the morning when everyone's going to work and going to school, you're going to have lots, lots of traffic. So the difference between, you know, average daily traffic, whether it's vehicle miles traveled, and in intersection analysis during peak hours is going to be very different. So I, these are just concerns I have because it's easy to say, oh, we, you know, you've got room for 20,000 more cars or whatever, so no problem, and, you know, we will check that box. So that was another one of my concerns was getting rid of a level of service because it's cumbersome or whatever, and and trying to smooth things out when vehicle miles travel. it's cumbersome or whatever, and, and trying to smooth things out when vehicle miles traveled still seems like it can be interpreted in different ways, you know, seems to me like it can be interpreted in different ways. But I suppose that's up to modeling and.
Yeah. And if I could add to that, I mean, again, we are the lead agency, and this is a disclosure document. So we, it is absolutely in our best interest, and we will absolutely be looking at the worst-case scenarios. So peak traffic hours is a perfect example of that.
Let's see. And you did mention Long Beach. I was thinking of Long Beach in addition to Los Alamos, Rossmore, a lot, there are a lot, we, we have so few arterials. I mean, we have Seal Beach Boulevard. Everything, you know, in our city depends on that moving. So whenever there's projects, you know, emptying on there, it's going to affect Leisure World, it's going to affect, you know, PCH, it's going to affect everybody. So I just want to make sure that cumulative is really, is really cumulative. So, thank you. It's the Instantex proposal. They assume that there will be somewhere like 50 comment letters or 100 comments. What hap, do we get like extra charges? Or what happens if we have more letters in addition to that?
Yes. Sure. If, if there's an onslaught of, of public comment that are widely varied from each other, then yes, that could result in additional charges. We did build in a little bit of a contingency. It, it, it just depends. We received a little over 100 comments on the Old Ranch from, from the scoping period. A number of them were very similar in, in nature. So it, it just kind of depends on, on, you know, what the, what the community input is. And, you know, obviously, we're going to be doing our, our due diligence in advance of the scoping meeting to try to make sure that we're including everything that, you know, that we're hearing now from the community and, and preparing that scope to address those things. But yeah, it's, it's possible, sure, that we, we get enough letters, that more time would be needed to address each comment, and that would result in an upcharge, yeah.
That, that's helpful. I, I did have a, that, you just brought up a question that I had regarding this one and regarding Old Ranch was, when comments, are the comments actually passed on to the consultants? Or are they just summarized in sort of?
Each, each individual comment is given to the consultant, yes.
If there's a specific concern, then they will hear about that concern. Okay. That's good. And, and in the document, it's under hazards and, and materials section, it says that the discussion of the joint forces training base, they will look at airport environs, land use plan, and federal relevant laws. I'm assuming means FAA height analysis.
That's right.
But is it, is it look at consistency with state guidelines at all?
No, I, I believe the, the airport land use plan is the document that we are required to have consistency with under SEQA.
Okay. Thank you. And one, one other question, the, the consultant that was interviewing the council members, I, I was looking for the name. I know I read it, but I can't. Was that considered public comment and, uh, public input? And they were looking at, seemed primarily the, the commercial areas. So I was wondering if that was specifically for the mixed-use rezoning? And I, I didn't, we didn't hear any kind of wrap-up on that, so.
That was part of the outreach of the zoning code update. So that was the, the zoning code project manager that was conducting those interviews. So we'll, we'll hear some of that at the April 24th meeting.
April 24th, okay. Okay. I, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Orlando?
Okay. So I just want to clarify, the, the program EIR is specifically to move us to be able to, to rezone and update our zoning. So when we do have a specific project that comes up, then a project-specific EIR, an in-depth EIR, will be done on that particular location, correct?
It's not likely that another EIR would be done. That's part of the, the streamlining that occurs with the program EIR. Now, what level of analysis for, for a project proposal? Again, without a project in front of us, I couldn't tell you what it is, but it, it would most likely be, you know, additional studies and, you know, there's, there's a variety of ways that SEQA can be handled to address additional projects. But it's unlikely that there would be another EIR, because it's more likely that the project that's proposed is going to fall, you know, with, within the parameters of the analysis that's been done for this EIR.
And did I hear you correctly, that it's up to your discretion if you wanted to have further studies done?
Yes.
At your discretion? Okay. And then, the originally, when you guys originally submitted, had the EQCB or Planning Commission, did they give any input on what the impacts would be besides the public input?
I'm sorry, for the housing element?
For, for this, so for this EIR?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, for this EIR, is the Planning Commission or EQCB going to also be able to give any consideration towards what impacts they feel would be relevant?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. We'll be holding the scoping meeting, as we did for Old Ranch. We actually had the EQCB host the scoping meeting, and I, I think it was a nice format. It seemed to work really well. So I would be looking to do that again for this scoping period, to have the EQCB hosted and provide input for the scoping piece of it, absolutely. And then we get to the public draft administrative EIR, which the public draft EIR would be like eight or nine months from now. And that's a 45-day period for the public to weigh in and participate before we go to the Planning Commission, once, once everything is kind of wrapped.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
And so what, what exactly are we going to be doing on April 24th?
We will be talking strictly about the zoning code. So what, what types of things are, are important in a mixed-use zone? We won't be talking about the environmental impacts. We'll be talking about things like look and feel, and, you know, what is, what is density, you know, look and feel like, and what's, what's important to the community, you know, when looking at a project like that? Is it, you know, is it important to have, you know, taller stories set back further from the street is, is an example? So it's, it's really more about the form and function of future development than it is the environmental.
Not related to the program EIR?
Essentially, yes. I mean, the, the program EIR will ultimately analyze development, but what we're trying to get to with, with the zoning meeting for April 24th is, is really just how, how can we make new development the best it can possibly be from, from a form and function standpoint? What does it look like that, you know, that we like about it? You know, you see, like an easy example would be an apartment building that's just flat, straight across, and it just looks, you know, maybe kind of dull, as opposed to a development where you've got a lot of articulation. You see things that are coming at you and pushing away from you or different form, you know, it's, it's that kind of thing. It's, it's about look and feel.
Will we also be, there's a lot of new state guidelines, laws that are, that are limiting setbacks and, and density and all sorts of stuff like that, fees. Will we get a refresher on some, some of the, some of that, or is that applicable to?
That's a good question. I mean, we can try to work the relevant pieces in, but I, I think for purposes of the study session, we, we really want to get to, you know, what, what could be produced under the zoning code.
I just mean, like, if, if we say, well, we'd like big setbacks, but that may not work out, depending on the type, depending on the project.
Yeah. I mean, right, for, for right now, it's really just, you know, hey, what's important to you? What do you like? And then we kind of go back and, you know, from, from the staff and, and project manager perspective, okay, how can we take these comments and incorporate them into development standards that, that work? And may, you know, we may not get to 100% of what everyone wants. We probably won't. But, you know, what, what can we do?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I guess my, my take is, we went from a requirement in the last housing element of a very small amount to 1,250. And, and that's kind of driving a lot of this. Is that correct?
That's absolutely right. Yes.
So it's, we don't really have a choice, in my opinion. We have to kind of do this, because we're kind of legally obligated by the state.
We are.
So, yeah. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
Councilmember Orlando, you?
I should be in there.
She should be in.
There she is. Okay.
Yeah.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay. We'll move on to new business, item H. 2022 General Plan Annual Progress Report that the City Council, one, receive and file the 2022 General Plan Annual Progress Report, including the housing element progress report and direct staff to submit the annual progress report to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research by April 1st, 2023. I call upon Community Development Director Smithel.
Thank you, Mayor. I know. I hope you all like the sound of my voice. It's been a lot tonight. Okay. Let me see if this works there. Nope. All right. Get it, Joe. Thank you. All right. The general plan. This is, this is hopefully going to be a nice, happy item for everyone, because it's, this is, this is a pretty cool thing. It's our blueprint for the future. It's a huge policy document that contains a series of elements, and it provides a roadmap for how the city plans its future. Ours is a little bit old. Most of the elements will turn 20 this year, but it's still very relevant to day-to-day and large project activities that the city undertakes. And tonight, we are here because we need to report to the state how we are doing on our general plan. I like to think of the reporting as having two components. The main one is that there's a state-prescribed format. It's this giant Excel file, and we report on our housing element, and in particular, how we are advancing in our unit assignment for policy implementation. Our unit allocation this cycle, as we've just discussed, is 1,243 units, but only one net new unit was completed in 2022. So not a whole lot of progress this year. The second component is the text document that highlights all the things the city has done to support the goals of the general plan. There's no set format for this reporting, but it is a nice opportunity for us to, to focus on these things for just a minute. Our general plan is currently comprised of eight elements, and it will soon be nine with the addition of the new environmental justice element. The housing element was updated by council in 2022, but is not yet certified by the state, as, as we've been over tonight. Updates are planned for three other elements, including the safety element, circulation element, and open space element. All of these are state mandates. Fortunately, their updates will not require the same level of scrutiny as the housing element. So we talk a lot about the housing element, and as you saw on the previous slide, the state mandates, you know, kind of keep coming with other elements, and it can absolutely feel like we're kind of getting hammered over the head with all the things we have to do. But in and of themselves, general plans are really very cool. They contain hundreds of policies that we incorporate into all kinds of activities. So I just wanted to take just a minute or two to talk about some of the special efforts in this last year that the community may not necessarily equate to our general plan, but they are very much in fact related. The last few years have definitely reminded all of us the value of open space and recreation for both our physical and mental health. And utilizing federal funding, the city council directed much-needed improvements at the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center, and the extensive work that was done this year, particularly by Public Works, to prepare the construction plans and go out to bid so that we can move forward on the physical work of making this space an even better area for our community. Last year, Marine Safety led the charge for a beach equipment rental locker and knew an innovative program we hope makes visiting the beach even more fun and potentially more convenient for people. Our senior transportation program currently has 1,300 people enrolled in it, and this program gets people to recreation, like walking the pier, and meets objectives in our transportation element that foster transit opportunities and reduce cars on the road, which in turn reduces noise and aligns with our growth management element. The microtransit grant applications we've now filed, too, could have those same benefits if that project comes to fruition. So some of these programs hit a lot of marks, and it's just so effective and wonderful and efficient when they all line up. The city developed a partnership with the new Seal Beach Historical Resources Foundation. This is a new organization, and they're working hard on defining their role, but their presence in the community speaks to a number of general plan policies and objectives. The safety element, all about emergency preparedness. So updating the emergency operations plan is absolutely a policy from our general plan, and PD takes the lead in that. So is communicating emergency preparedness to our community. Every doorknob in the city received a doorknob hanger last year, talking about how to be better prepared for an emergency situation. We join the Orange County Finance Trust, which gives affordable housing developers the opportunity to apply for grant funding, but moreover strengthens Orange County's ability to lobby for housing funds at the state and federal levels. Because when it comes to making sure people have a safe place to sleep, we can't operate as an island. We are part of a region, and we need a regional approach to solutions. And finally, we're in our 17th year of providing grant funds to seniors to renovate their bathrooms to facilitate aging in place. And we have done such a good job at it that the county gave us additional funds this year to expand the program citywide for, for a limited window of time. So quick plug, if you know any seniors that live outside of Leisure World, we do have funding available for a few more months here to look at grab bars and seating within showers and those types of things. And, and these are only a few examples. More are contained in the document than sit in front of you. And I just want to say, how is this, you know, how is this all done? Well, it's done with council support for these amazing programs. And who works on it? Well, everyone, everywhere, all at once. The general plan tends to live in community development. It's kind of housed here, but it's definitely not a community development plan. It is a citywide plan, and everyone contributes and touches different elements of it. So it's, it's just really cool when, when you can see the entire team working together to bring this massive policy document to life. Tonight's action is, is simply for you to put eyes on this. You don't have to take any action. It's essentially receive and file, and then we will send it up to the state to meet their deadline by April 1st. And I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you. That was great, Alexa. You guys are doing an amazing job. I have one comment, though. The state is mandating us to come up with 1,243 extra units, and then they want us to work on open space. So it's kind of contradictory, I think. My question is, you know, I understand the state requires us to do this annual review. Can they reject it like they rejected our housing element?
Fortunately, no. It's, it's really just reporting, and if anything, they'll call us for clarifying questions, but.
Okay. Thank you. And then, since we don't have a certified housing element yet, do the new units that are built now count towards all those units that we have to build?
They do. Yeah. Even if we don't obtain certification, which we will, the units do count. Thank you.
Any other comments?
All right. Is there a motion?
Sure. I'll move happily.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Five votes, yes.
Okay. I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting. Sadly, tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of our former Public Works Director, friend, and colleague, Steve Murder, who passed away last Thursday, March 23rd. Our city manager appointed Steve Murder as our Director of Public Works. Our city manager appointed Steve Marder as our Director of Public Works in 2017, and he served for five and a half years as a key member of the city's executive management team, until his retirement last September, with nearly 30 years of dedicated public service. Steve was a highly respected public works professional, serving many communities, and prior to Steve's service to our community, he also served as Public Works Director for the city of Signal Hill, Town of San Encelmo, and previously served as the Director of Utilities for the cities of Newport Beach, Paramount, and the Manager of Engineering for the City of Long Beach Water Department, following many years as a project engineer and consultant in the private sector. Steve's consistent and positive leadership and successful management, maintenance, and improvement of the city's public infrastructure through oversight of our Administrative Engineering Division, Utilities and Maintenance Division, and the city's capital improvement program will continue to greatly benefit the city of Seal Beach and our community for many years to come. Last October, the city council honored Steve's retirement from our city and extended our sincerest gratitude to him for his dedicated service to our community as our Public Works Director. It's very sad that we're now, tonight, adjourning our council meeting in his memory. At the same council meeting last year, the council memorialized the city's longstanding tradition of the city council and staff wearing Hawaiian shirts to city council meetings during the summer months, and proclaimed that this time be recognized as Steve Marder's season of summer shirts, in honor of Steve's dedicated service as the Director of Public Works and his love of Hawaiian shirts and this tradition. Steve was incredibly honored with this recognition, so let's all especially honor Steve during our Hawaiian shirt season this year, and wear them in his memory and remembering his love of our community. We will never forget Steve's infectious smile and laugh, his sense of humor, his positive and helpful attitude, his selfless dedication and unending patience, and his leadership, friendship, and unwavering dedication to the city of Seal Beach. Each one of us here tonight is honored to have called Steve Marder our friend. On behalf of the entire city council, city manager, executive team, city staff, and the community, we extend our sincerest and heartfelt sympathy, thoughts, and prayers to Steve's wife, Jolene, his two sons, Nick and Jack, his parents, extended family members, many of his friends and colleagues throughout Orange County, Los Angeles County, and Marin County, and all that knew and loves Steve. Are there any council members that would like to comment? Comment?
Steve was just a wonderful guy. He loved his job, he loved the city of Seal Beach, he really did, and, you know, somebody like that, you just, you know, you can't believe they're gone. And, you know, I also, you know, offer my sympathy to his family and so forth, and, you know, I'm proud to say that I got to know him for the years that I did, and will always remember the legacy that he's left us with.
Hey, Susan, start.
Yes, I, when I started on council here, Steve started just about the same time. He was just such a friendly, happy guy to work with, and so helpful, and lots and lots of discussions, not only water, but wells and all sorts of other things, smells and such, but I really enjoyed working with him and miss him, and I want to thank his family again for sharing Steve with us, thank you.
I just, I got to know Steve pretty well, and he was a great guy, and I remember when he first started, we were having a flooding issue in Seal Beach, and Steve came in, and he went down to the West End Pump Station and just was able to get things resolved. And it was, just since then, we haven't had, you know, we've had flooding problems, but they haven't been as crazy as it was that year. And he just loved to work, he loved coming to work, and I think he really enjoyed working at the city, so it was really nice to get to know him, and my deepest condolences. And let's go ahead and adjourn, thank you.